Good evening, and welcome to the October 2nd, 2024 Yarmouth Planning Board meeting. I am Joanne Crowley, the Chair. This is to formally advise that as required by Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 38, Paragraphs 18 to 25, and pursuant to Chapter 20 of the Acts of 2021, and an Act relative to extending certain state of emergency accommodations, signed into law on June 16th, 2021, the Yarmouth Planning Board will hold a public hearing and meeting on October 2nd, 2024, at 5:30 PM. Public is welcome to attend in person this evening or via alternative public access provided in the notice of meeting available on the Town of Yarmouth website. I'll begin by taking roll call. Susan Britta.
Here.
Will Rubenstein.
Here.
Jim Saban. Peter Slovac. Ken Smith.
Here.
Joanne Crowley here. Seeing that we have a quorum present, I will now call the meeting to order, and I would ask you that you join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
... to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. The first item on our agenda this evening is a public hearing with regard to planning board zoning articles for the special town meeting in November. I would now like to open this public hearing of the planning board regarding the zoning articles that we will be presenting on November 19th, 2024. I note the time as 5:35. Following the protocol for public hearings, I'll first read into the record the public hearing notice that was published in the Cape Cod Times on September 17th and the 24th. Public hearing notice published in the Cape Cod Times on September 17th, 2024, and September 24th, 2024. Public hearing notice, Yarmouth Planning Board. The Yarmouth Planning Board will hold a public hearing on Wednesday, October 2nd, 2024, at 5:30 PM in the hearing room of the Yarmouth Town Offices, 1146 Route 28, South Yarmouth, Mass., 02664, and via remote access or via telephone, and via entering webinar ID to consider the following proposals to amend the Yarmouth zoning bylaw. Number one, amend zoning bylaw Section 412, affordable housing, to revise the methodology used to determine the amount of the fee to be paid in lieu of creating affordable housing units. Article number two, amend Section 405.5, 404.5, seasonal employee housing at motels, hotels, to limit the number of rooms that can be utilized for seasonal employee housing at motels, hotels, to a maximum of 15% in the Hotel Motel Overlay District 2, HMOD 2, zoning district along South Shore Drive, and to amend Section 500 definitions to clarify the definition for transient at motels or hotels and at extended stay hotels. Copies of the complete proposed text for the amendments are available at the Planning Division Yarmouth Town Offices, 1146 Route 28, South Yarmouth, Mass., 02664, during business hours, 8:30 AM to 4:30 PM, Monday through Friday, and on the Town of Yarmouth website under the Planning Division. Any person interested in or wishing to be heard regarding these proposals to amend the zoning bylaw should appear at the time and place designated. Written comments will be accepted and should be directed to the Planning Board care of Kathy Williams, Town Planner, at kwilliams@yarmouth MA.us, no later than October 1st, 2024, at 5:00 PM. Yarmouth Planning Board, Joanne Crowley, Chair. So let me begin first by thanking the planning board members and town staff, in particular Mary Wagon and Kathy Williams, who have worked on developing these proposed amendments over the course of the past several months. I would also like to thank you, the residents of Yarmouth who are here, who initiated the development of Article 2 relating to seasonal employee housing, and who have joined us at various meetings to finalize the recommended language. We welcome and appreciate your engagement with us on this important amendment. The order of the meeting, Kathy's going to present the proposed amendments. We will then have public comments or questions from those of you who are here or joining us remotely. Kathy, if there are any written comments, we didn't receive any, I didn't think so?
Comments.
And then any comments or questions from the planning board, and then we will close the public hearing to continue our deliberations on whether or not to recommend these two articles to special town meeting. So let us begin, Kath. Why don't you start us off?
Sure. Good evening, everyone. I think everyone here is very familiar with what we're going to be talking about tonight, but maybe somebody's watching at home and we can kind of go over it. This is just identifying the different planning board members, but we do have the one vacancy, so if anyone's interested, they can fill out a Talent Bank form on the town website and see if maybe the planning board's the right fit for you. So the first article that we're talking about is actually zoning Article 1, which is related to affordable housing, and the purpose of this is to basically modify the methodology that we're using to calculate the fee that would be paid in lieu of creating affordable housing units within your own development, and really to have it correlate to median home prices rather than median income, which will be better reflective of what it actually costs to create an affordable housing unit. So just a little bit of background, our zoning bylaw includes affordable units being required when you have five or more housing units being developed or five residential lots being created. We have three different ways in which you can meet this requirement with regard to affordable units. You can provide it onsite, so just develop an affordable unit within the basis of your property and your project, or you can do it offsite. So if you have another property offsite that's in good condition, it could be used as a very good affordable unit, you could have that offsite housing unit be designated. Or the third option is paying a fee in lieu of creating it to the Yarmouth Affordable Housing Trust, who then pools all this money together and helps to create and preserve affordable units. This flexibility is really important because it helps to support overall development of housing. We don't want affordable housing to deter someone from creating a development. So if you have one affordable unit and you're not familiar with the different requirements which are rather detailed, then maybe you just say, okay, it's easier for me to pay a fee in order to address this zoning requirement. And as I noted before, the current formula is tied to median home income, and there's one set fee for all different housing types. So whether it's a single-family home, it's a duplex, or it's in a multifamily, it's all, the fee would be the same. So what we're proposing to do is because we've had such a shift in market conditions, which has changed significantly since this formula was originally created back in 2013, where the median home prices have significantly outpaced median income. So the new formula really calculates the difference between what's an actual median home price in our area and the price set for an actual affordable unit. So it's the difference between those two. And then there would be separate fees set for a single-family home, which is obviously more expensive. So if your development has a single-family home, we expect you to pay a fee related to the single-family home calculation. But if you have a duplex or multifamily or some type of condominium unit, then that would be a different fee. The planning board included calculating the fee annually, so it will be set for the following 12-month period. This really helps developers know the costs when they're working on their development and their pro forma to have a known number, it's going to be helpful to them. And so this just gives a real little brief little example of the existing formula is basically set at 125% of the current median income, which for fiscal year '24 was $122,700. So that would require a fee of $153,375. The proposed formula for single-family, you can see the median sale home price in August was $565,000. The affordable price is $280,000, so the difference would be a fee of $285,000. And then doing it for duplexes and multifamily, median condo prices in Yarmouth was $424,900. The affordable price for condominium was $250,000, so that fee would be $174,900. So you can see the difference on the new formula, be more for condos and quite a bit more for single-family homes.
Kath, if I could interrupt, I'd just like to make a comment that Mr. Saban has arrived at 5:43.
I didn't know whether you wanted to questions and comments after each article, or you just would like me to go through the whole presentation?
Why don't we do it after each article? Any questions from the public? And if not, questions or comments from the board, we've been working on this for a while. So, Susan.
Just a clarification. Kathy, the development on 6A, the Davenport development, that will be, I assume that calculation we made under the old formula and not the new formula, correct?
It would be the old formula, and they've actually paid that.
Okay.
So, Madam Chair, may I ask a question?
Certainly.
What is the, when do we decide when the annual reset is? Is it based on when HLC, does HLC set something based on the state's fiscal year, but the Warren Group has a different calendar? How do we square those two?
I think the Warren Group set monthly.
That's right. Madam Chair, Warren Group does set pricing monthly based on region, so every month they come out with a new market valuation, where the market's at for that particular month. I do believe when we were discussing this that it was going to be, a valuation was going to be done on a specific timeframe each year, and I'd like to make sure that's in there because market conditions change dramatically depending on, especially right now where the market is so volatile, that the price fluctuation is huge. It's once a year.
It says on an annual basis. Is that purposely vague?
My understanding was that Mary Wagon indicated that when HUD set, or I'm sorry, when the Housing and Livable Communities sets their affordable price would be when we would set ours, and sometimes it's not exactly.
That's what it says.
They don't get to it exactly a certain time every single year.
It's typically, HUD typically sets theirs Q1 for the balance of the year, so I would like to see us maybe if we at least have that stipulation in there, because it does, it will deter some developers if they can't calculate where their payments are going to be and what they're going to be, so.
It's Q1 of the federal fiscal year starting?
State fiscal.
State, okay.
It's Q1, state fiscal.
July, August, September.
That's right.
I can certainly talk to Mary about that and nail it down.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, I'm hoping, I'm not bringing this up in order to make any material changes to this amendment, because that wouldn't be great.
Yeah, I don't think that's-
Oh, no, it's not too late, actually.
No, I don't think that's too material. I mean, like you say, if it's something that Mary says, yeah, it's always done in the blankety-blank quarter, we can just put that-
Okay, because it does say-
We'll just make sure that that's available, the timing and the, exactly when these things can happen will be available to the developers.
I do think it's important to the developers.
We don't need to have it in the amendment.
Right, exactly.
Okay, thank you. I just wanted to talk that through because I knew it was too different.
Once a year, correct?
Once a year.
Are they prohibited from adjusting more than once a year if something crazy goes with the market? Is it still only once a year?
Who is "they"?
The Warren Group, that we're going to tie our decision to. They do it all the time.
They do it every month. They do it 12 times a year. The Warren Group does it 12 times a year. HUD does it. HUD does it once a year.
HUD does it only once.
Okay.
HUD only sets it once, but Warren Group, you know, they send out evaluation reports by county in Massachusetts, in other regions, every, what's that?
So yesterday they would have sent one out?
Yesterday, I assume. Jim may be able to answer that better than I can, but I know they do it once a month.
Beginning of the month, anytime within the first couple days.
There's a little question there.
We just need to find out from Mary when she feels the affordable price is set, and then we can come up with some language, and we can talk about it at the next meeting and finalize it because we're going before the Select Board on the 29th.
Oh, okay. Well, then I don't want to slow the meeting down anymore, Madam Chair.
It's good to know now.
That's a good question.
Mm-hmm.
Yep. Any other comments on Article number one? Okay.
So Article number two is related to seasonal employee housing at hotels and motels, and it really just sets limits to hotels and motels located within HMOD 2 zoning district, which is all along South Shore Drive, to a maximum of 15% of their rooms being used for seasonal employees. And then again, as mentioned in the public hearing notice, we have some clarifications with regard to the definitions. So a little bit of background, obviously, housing or temporary seasonal workers is very important because we need to support our tourism economy. Our existing bylaw does allow eligible motels and hotels to use up to 15% of their rooms to house their seasonal employees or seasonal employees of other Yarmouth businesses from April 1st to October 31st, and it's done through an annual permit with the Building Commissioner if they meet all of the operational standards that are outlined within the zoning bylaw. And these include things like you've got to meet all your state, local, septic, health codes, provisions for kitchen facilities, and then also having an onsite proctor, so there's someone onsite watching over this situation. And if all operational standards, including the 15% limit, are not met, then an applicant could apply to the Zoning Board of Appeals for a special permit, for a one-year special permit. And some hotels along Route 28 have done that and successfully received that special permit. And this is just to give you an idea, I think most of us know where South Shore Drive is, but this is Parker's River, this is Bass River, Nantucket Sound, and this is where we have all of our, kind of our more premier hotel properties along here. So anything that's in that purple color is one of the properties that's located in the HMOD 2. So the proposed changes are really, they were initiated by request from some residents who abutted the residential neighborhood to the north, and it just prohibits HMOD 2 properties from applying to ZBA to use more than 15% of their rooms for seasonal employees. So they could still maintain the 15%, but they couldn't apply for more, and they also retain their right to seek relief for any of the other operational standards that are in that section of the bylaw. And then with regard to the proposed changes to the definitions, these are really just minor clarifications, I think, to help with enforcement related to the transient definition for motels and hotels and extended stay. It really clarified that limitations on continuous occupancy are at a single motel or hotel property. It's not a room-by-room situation, it's property-related. And then it specifically states that the transient definition does not apply to some of these other sections of the zoning bylaw, including onsite property managers, and also doesn't apply to seasonal employee housing at motels, hotels, because there's a separate definition for that. That's it.
Thank you. Any comments or questions from the public? Any comments, questions, concerns by the board? Mr. Saban?
I've been gone for the last couple weeks, so I apologize. Have we got any feedback from any of the hotels, et cetera, that are going to be affected by this, or have we got any feedback from the Chamber of Commerce with regards to this?
I had the same question.
I sent a notice to Mary Vilbon when we had the meeting before with the residents, and I also sent another one, just asking her to notify the particular property owners here. I think the vast majority of these property owners aren't really interested in more than 15%. As I mentioned, there are premier hotels, and they want to rent the rooms to guests and make their money. And then some of the other places, like the Village Green, which kind of instigated some of the concerns from the neighbors, they're staying within their 15%. They apply for an annual permit from the Building Commissioner, and they're less than their 15%. So it doesn't seem like there's any real need. And I checked all these, and they're the only ones in the HMOD 2 that even are using any of it. So I don't, I think most of these hotel owners are probably comfortable with it because they're renting their rooms out to guests.
My next question would be, why do we have the Skipper Restaurant listed as-
It was located in the HMOD 2 back in 2008 or whenever the HMOD 2 was created.
There's no particular reason except to say that.
I think the difference is it's a business entity within that underlying residential zoning district.
Okay.
It's the only one in the district.
It is. The only restaurant within the district.
Yeah, only that kind of business, yeah.
I did point out to Kathy, just for clarification, the properties south of South Shore Drive, south of Red Jacket, are not part of the Red Jacket property, so they're the only, they're well not part of E.O.s, they're residentially and privately owned, and they're the only privately owned homes along that strip that are part of this overlay, right?
A little tiny bit.
That strip right there, that's correct.
Thanks.
Right above the word beach house.
Yeah.
That's right.
Any other comments?
The only thing, Kathy did mention that, but did Mary Vilbon express any concerns at all?
Initially, she had asked me to investigate and see who was actually doing it, and that's when I identified that it was just the Village Green, and I relayed that information to her.
Okay.
Anything else from members of the board, Ms. Britta?
Do we think we've closed all of the loopholes? This has been like death of a thousand slashes. Every three months, we're doing an amendment. Do you think we got them all? Is this the, do you think there'll be some other more creative minds to find other loopholes? They did a great job identifying the loophole and, of course, supplying the solution. Can you think of anything else that may be lurking that we would have to come back and if summer employees all over again?
I think there, you know, some of the interviews that we've been having with regard to local comprehensive plan is that there does seem to be some concerns that we may not have enough seasonal employee housing. I think we need to identify, right, exactly, what's the gap that we're really talking about and what has been satisfactorily addressed with the two motels that are using this bylaw?
I mean, certainly, I think along Route 28, we've given them the leeway to apply for, you know.
100%.
Yeah, exactly. So if we need more, the motels can already apply for more, but-
Yes, it's individual property owners, you know, and I think some of them, the ones that are doing it, have really learned a lot of lessons over the years, and have put in additional and more and more protocols and codes of conduct and, you know, security and the different types of things in order to make sure that this is a good, strong operation for them. Because it's their property as well.
And they get the relief that they asked for, right? Yep. And just wanted, do you think this takes care of your problem?
We are both saying.
Okay. It all's in the implementation, but you've done a great job.
Yeah.
So let's keep our fingers crossed and hope that someone respects the law.
We tried to make sure and/or but, maybe, I don't know. But Kathy did a great job. Okay, any, anything else? Okay. Then if we don't have any other concerns, Kathy, I think I'd ask for a motion to close the public hearing on zoning articles for the November special town meeting.
So moved.
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor? All right.
Aye.
I note the time as 5:55. And so now, our job is to deliberate and make a recommendation. If we have any other changes, Kathy, should we hold off on a vote until next meeting?
I would hold off on a vote.
Based on what Mr. Smith and Mr. Rubenstein?
If we have another meeting, we might as well take it and see what Mary has to say and get that language down right. Because I agree, there's probably developers who'd like to know, well, when's it going to change?
Right.
Does it change on, you know, in August, and am I two months away, or is it going to change, you know?
There's a flag in the ground so they can plan on either side.
I'm almost certain, we heard Mary talk about that. I just forget what she said.
She did talk about it, I don't remember what she said.
I don't know what she said.
Not here to defend herself.
She's on vacation this week.
Yeah, it's fine.
She's forgiven, as long as she's here in two weeks.
But she had the answer. I mean, she had an answer. I just forget what it was, but it was, it's out there, we just need to pull it back in.
So we will deliberate at our next meeting. If you would like to join us again, we would welcome your company, but I don't think that the change is going to materially affect all the work that you've helped us with, so I want to thank you again for your participation, we really appreciate it. But you'll get the notice, and you'll know in a couple of weeks how we're going to lock in on when these things are going to-
We're going before the Select Board on October 29th, where we'll be presenting the zoning, and they may or may not vote. I would like to think that they would vote to recommend that night, sometimes they-
Do they have to because of the timing? I mean, do they have a special meeting right before?
They have a special meeting sometime right before, but it's usually in more, different types of articles than this, but hopefully they would vote to recommend it.
Okay.
Yeah, it's a Select Board meeting, yes. Yep. It'd be a Zoom, too, if you wanted to zoom in.
Kathy, would it be inappropriate to, I'm just curious as to whether we could just talk about who might present the article?
Sure.
You know, we have two articles. I'm interested in people's interest in presenting and then explaining at town meeting. Anyone interested?
Madam Chair, unfortunately, I have a work conflict, and I will not be able to attend.
Town meeting.
Yeah, I was really trying to get out of it, but I can't.
November 19th?
Do I have that right?
Yeah.
Town meeting.
So I'm sorry, I'm not eligible to help.
I'll do one of them. I did it last time, I don't know if anyone wants to take advantage of it.
Which one? Would you be interested?
I'm not really interested in doing either, but I will do one if, if, if.
I think we, I think, I think Susan and Peter Slovac should fight it out, since Peter's not here. I'm kidding.
Why don't you do seasonal? Why don't you do seasonal and-
One of my favorites, okay, good.
And we'll wait till Peter comes back next time.
And he'll learn to not miss meetings.
Well, there are some intricacies about when things happen with these Warren reports, and I would like someone who's familiar with what all that means to present. So among the gentlemen who are appraisers and real estate people, I would appreciate you thinking about it for our next meeting.
I'll be doing yours.
Including Mr. Slovac.
So be there in case I screw up.
It's a three-way tie for who gets to do it.
I also wanted to recognize, I don't know that we did, Kathy, we did have one.
Yeah, Ellen.
Ellen was here. Ellen, thank you for joining us. We appreciate your participation.
Thank you.
Thank you.
She said her own.
Yep, thank you.
All right, so, moving on to the next item on our agenda, committee assignments. Oh, I forgot about that. Thanks again.
On that note, the place empties right out. How about that?
Don't forget we have a vacancy.
Yeah, that's right.
Yeah, we have a vacancy.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Committee assignments. At our last meeting, we discussed annual appointments to CPC, CEDC, CBC, you know, the alphabet soup of committees that we're all assigned to at our last meeting, and the assignments made by consensus at our last meeting are listed in the table that Kathy has provided in our packet. Jim and Susan were not here in attendance at the meeting, so I'd like to try to finalize the appointment, we need to finalize the appointments this evening. So we have Community Housing Committee that Jim currently is on, and I'd like to, Jim, I know you're not interested because you're picking up on design review, and we do appreciate that because that's a fair amount of time, so, anyone interested in community housing? Can you share with us the amount of time? It's a monthly meeting?
No, it's more than monthly, but the biggest problem is that they meet like at 3:00 in the afternoon.
Right, that's-
What day of the week, Tim?
Yeah, what day?
Mondays. I believe it's Mondays.
It's a Monday.
I thought they only met once a month, I didn't realize they were meeting, because if-
Well, sometimes they meet more often because of the subject matter that's been going on, but typically it's just the once a month.
And it's just that, you're not, I should know this, but Kath, you have the acronym for the Affordable Housing Trust, we're not on that, are we?
We are, but we're not.
As part of it? Oh, we are, but we're not.
We're supposed to be on the two, but Mary Wagon had asked me not to because she had somebody who was in her back pocket.
Well, I think that we're not required to these-
Oh, okay, that's what I need, that's-
One of the things that I've been told, including myself, we need to talk into our mics more.
Oh, yes.
Sorry.
Isn't, Madam Chair, I believe at one point, wasn't Brad, Brad was doing that?
Oh, yes.
So I think that's why we had a representative for such a long time, and we never really had to worry about it.
Yeah.
Okay. But it's not required.
It's, to my understanding, it's not required.
Affordable Housing Trust, no, but CHC is required.
Yes.
It's my understanding.
Correct.
Okay. Okay, as Chair, I guess this is one of my jobs to, I'll pick up on that, to help out. Housing is a hot subject, so.
Well, would this be the right committee for the conversations that are going to happen about the Forest Road property, or is that completely out of that? That's not what they're going to be chatting about?
You mean the Housing Authority?
Either one.
The Housing Authority is separate, is a separate organization.
Right. No, 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 I meant, there's obviously, something is going to happen to the big property on Forest Road at some point.
At some point.
So which committee will that come up under?
It won't.
Probably go to the zoning board.
Goes right to ZBA, okay.
None of these.
Just in the interest of, you know, again, for all the people that watch in the future, because again, this is something that we're hearing more and more people come to select board meetings and ask about. And so I just wanted it to be out there that it's not the planning board, it's not Community Housing Committee, it's not the Affordable Housing Trust, it is our friends at the ZBA, most likely.
Right, through a comprehensive permit through a Chapter 40B is how I assume that they would do it. There's no other way to do it because it's not zoned for.
I apologize, it's slightly tangential, but I thought in the sense of like, where are the big issues? Where do they live in our town? This one apparently will not live in any of those places except for the ZBA.
And was it the Alexandria Housing Authority? Well, who actually, what is that entity that's not on here?
The Armith Housing Authority, it's a state agency. It is a state agency, which I think.
Understood, that's important to clarify.
The more we can communicate that clearly, I think the better. The town has no authority over it at all, except through the ZBA.
Got it, thank you, Madam Chair.
Can I just ask you, Joanne, is this you covering until we get a new member?
I'll do it for the year and, and until, if we get a new member, we'll, when we get a new member, we can look again at maybe some reallocation. But I would like to stay on CPC for this cycle because we've already started it. We've already started it, so. So then we have Drive-In Site, Susan, which you are on now, which is continuing, right? I mean, that's not going away, is it?
It'll be alive for a while, correct?
He keeps wanting to disband it and I won't let him.
We didn't know who to pass it off to, so right now, the last time we met, I think the sentiment was we were going to stay in existence for two weeks.
I think we need to continue with a couple items, one of them is setting up a use policy. We only have an interim use policy when we had no amenities there.
So there's too many amenities.
And setting a fee.
It's only a boardwalk.
No, Jim, stop.
And setting fees and then maybe looking at maybe naming rights for some, once it's constructed and there's something worth naming, like with regard to specific areas, not the park itself, but specific areas. I think the DICE could be helpful with that.
So you'll continue, Susan?
Yep.
Okay. And then we have land disposition, Jim, again, has it met?
No, we did originally looked at like five different properties, but, you know, through the wisdom of the town leaders, we purchased town property, properties in town and we don't discuss it with the Land Disposition Committee before we purchase it. So I'm not sure why we are even in existence, but we are.
Would you like to, would you like to continue?
Yeah, it's no heavy lifting, it's when they decide that there's a piece of property that they maybe want to sell or something like that.
Don't they have to go to town meeting to sell?
But apparently, they don't have to go to this committee first, Madam Chair.
No, they don't have to go to the committee first to buy stuff, they, you know.
What about to sell it?
There's six buildable lots or eight buildable lots on Higgins Cove Road that we purchased. They didn't ask the Land Disposition Committee whether we thought it was a good idea or not. And they even asked the town meeting and they went, no. Went, but why are we here then? So I don't know the purpose of the Land Disposition Committee any more than anybody else does, except that they had a list of properties that the town clerk wanted to try to get money for. So we had to look at those and say, yeah, we should sell this and no, we shouldn't sell this. And there were like five or six properties and that was two years ago, so.
All right, so you'll continue, thank you, I appreciate that.
I'm doing nothing, I like it.
Best unpaid job he's ever had tonight.
Kathy, do we need a motion to?
I can just say based on consensus.
By consensus, the allocation of committee members to committee assignments, planning board members to committee assignments, as we've discussed. So Ken Smith will be on capital budget, Peter Slovac will continue on community economic development, I will pick up community housing, I will stay on as community preservation committee, Jim Saban will join the design review committee, drive-in site utilization, Susan Berta will represent us, land disposition, Jim Saban will represent us, and the Water Resources Advisory Committee, Will Rubenstein will represent us on that. Thank you. Next item on our agenda, local comprehensive plan update.
Madam Chair, before we go to that.
Yes.
I'm not sure if it's appropriate to talk about this now or at individual comment sections of this meeting. But last night, I went to the Board of Selectmen and I was kind of treated like Kamala Harris does and not comment on anything. My question to them was, if we have a large piece of property in town that we're planning to redevelop and we're putting together a planning committee, why is it that there's no member of the planning board on this committee? And I just got stone-faced looks of how dare you even ask us such a question. And I think maybe we should be sending a letter to the Board of Selectmen saying, how do you have a planning process that you don't include the primary committee in town for planning? You know, I don't even know if the town planner is even invited to this meetings, but they have the finance committee on this, on this committee. They have the assistant DPW director, a town employee, on this committee.
Capital Budget Committee also has.
And a member of the Capital Budget Committee.
And it's related to the LCP, Madam Chair, just.
But for some reason, whoever's. I have to think before I speak sometimes. Whoever came up with this crazy idea thinks that the planning of the largest piece of property in town should not have a member of the planning board on it. And I think that we should send a letter to the Selectmen, because they weren't going to answer my question last night, that we should ask them, come to a meeting with us and explain your rationale behind not having a member of the planning board on planning the most significant piece of property this town will ever redevelop. It just, it's ludicrous to me, it makes absolutely no sense to me. I'm sure some members of this committee may, this board may agree with me, but I don't think we're going to get an answer by just me going on and at public, the public comment section and have them look at me like I'm got three heads and not even give me an answer. I expected that maybe they might say something at the end of the night to address the questions, but they didn't. And I don't think they will unless we actually send them something that says, hey, what gives here? Explain to us your rationale behind, I mean, I was out of country, so I didn't even get an interview. I don't know if you.
There were no interviews.
There were no interviews to even determine, you know, I'm not looking to get in another committee, but real estate appraisers are professionals at a thing called the highest and best use analysis to determine what something is financially feasible, physically possible, and legally permissible. It's what we do every day, but they didn't even bother even talk to me. So I'm at a loss as how they're trying to put this committee together without even interviewing people who may have something to provide as, and I'm not, I mean, all great names of people that are on there that they've picked, but it bewilders me as to why the geniuses that meet on Tuesday night think that maybe the planning board shouldn't be involved in planning. So my question would be, would you, Madam Chair, or would this board be willing to send a letter to them asking them to explain themselves?
That's a good question, it has come up time and again. Mr. Rubenstein has brought it up, Mr. Smith has brought it up. Ms. Britta has brought it up. I would like to offer a possible approach. One, I, as Chair of the committee, could go to the next Board of Selectmen meeting and ask, because I think asking in person, personally, I think asking in person and being face-forward is the most direct way, and you tried.
He did it.
I'm not saying I'm going to be any more effective, but I would like to maybe suggest a two-step approach that we go at it one more time again and see if we get an answer. What I think we're asking for is an additional slot on the committee, change the, change the charge of the committee so that there is a member of the planning board. I mean, we've raised an issue and we have, we have a suggested solution.
Madam Chair, the only, the only challenge, if I may, is that because of the, let me just say unpredictable nature of the meeting schedule of our friends at the Select Board, their next meeting isn't for four weeks. So that means four weeks are going to go by before you even get in front of them. Because again, I don't understand how everything works, but apparently, the day after a holiday is not an eligible day to have a Select Board meeting, which again, makes no sense to me, you just send out the notices a day or two early. But whatever, it's not my, it's not my purview, however, I just wanted to make you aware of that. So that's going to be another four weeks, and just to throw a little more icing on the cake, the only good news is, as I've learned today, that committee still hasn't met yet and doesn't even have a date to meet yet. So it isn't too late, because as we all know, this should have been six years ago when this committee started. Having said all that, I just wanted to make you aware that the next Select Board meeting is not until the 29th.
Ms. Britta.
And also, as an alternative, and if you get shut down on a full seat on the committee, one of the things we talked about was maybe having a, a planning seat but being a non-vote. If they don't want any larger than seven, I think it's too small, I personally think it's too small. I think they should expand it to at least nine, but, and we should be one of them. But if they stick to what they've done, then I think as planned, if they can't give you a reasonable expectation, the plan should be, then what about having a planning board member on the committee but a non-voting member? And just go to, be able to go to the meetings, take notes and whatever, and then report back to the. That's maybe an alternative to be an official member but non-voting.
Did anybody watch the conversation that happened when they picked the committee? I did.
Yes.
Anybody else did? Kathy, you watched it, okay, so Jim, just so you know, the actual, the thing that's going to make you feel even worse is that this committee that was formed, the way I understood that the meeting, the charge officially is, they're, part of their job is to go to all of the other committees in town and say, what do you think we should do with Matichees? So believe it or not, Mr. Saban, the Matichees Reuse Committee is going to come before the planning board to have a conversation about what we think is our, is our, is our advice about what to do about the Matichees Middle School property. And they're going to go to the CBC, and they're going to go to the Finance Committee, and they're going to go to Recreation, and they're going to go to CEDC, Madam Chair. So I'm going to say this respectfully, I'm not so sure, and again, I don't disagree that we shouldn't have been on the committee to begin with, I just fear for the person on this planning board that gets assigned to it that I don't know how great a use of your time it's going to be. Because ultimately, the real decision power is going to be from the Select Board who don't seem to really have as much of a vested interest in this process moving at any speed whatsoever, except for the slowest speed, not to mention the fact that this property is being paid for by the taxpayers of our town every single month to just basically sit there, by the way, I might add, unless I heard wrong, as an uninsured building on a massive piece of property, the biggest piece of property in our town. Sorry, Madam Chair, just wanted to summarize some of the things I thought I heard a couple of weeks ago.
To me, I mean, if it was so important to have a representative from the planning board on.
All these committees.
Drive-in site utilization committee, the land disposition committee, the Water Resources Advisory Committee.
I think that's a great.
How can we not be put on this, and again, I'm not looking for more work to do, I'm just trying to understand for the life of me, how you have a major planning project in town and not have the planning department involved?
I think any future letter or any future conversation, Madam Chair, that you would like to have in front of the Select Board should literally start with that point, is that there is history and context for the planning board to be involved in multiple aspects of the function of our town, and yet, in this greatest hour.
A direct link.
We are completely ignored. Sorry, I think we've hit this hammer, this nail on the head, but I'll defer to Mr. Smith also, who hasn't said anything.
No, thank you, I think we've hit the nail right on the head, I think we all, I believe I'll feel the exact same way. I think at the very least, we should get in front of the Select Board and say, look, this is inappropriate.
Or, I mean, it's just a suggested approach and then if, if, if there is still not a satisfactory answer, then we do put it in writing. But I, I think, you know, they, the, the Board of Selectmen need, the Select Board does, does need to hear loud and clear that, I think we all feel very strongly about this.
As the goal point.
The real question, and that's, this is the pragmatic part of it.
Please.
Will, that I appreciate, one, we can't ask for it and then not step up and do it.
Of course, right, of course.
So that's number one.
Of course.
That's number one.
That was my emotional.
Said we would do it.
They both volunteered, and to make matters worse, when this came up two years ago in informal conversation on this committee.
I think we assumed.
We said, we said one of us will volunteer, and you actually, I think, informally spoke to someone and said, don't forget, now the planning board would be interested in being on the Matichees redevelopment committee. Because we thought about maybe sending a letter and you said, no, I'll just mention it. So it's been two years.
It's been in the minutes, I mean, we have talked about this.
Yes, yes. So it's not like we came up both out of the blue and said, oh, put someone on there. We have constantly said we're interested in this.
So if the board is not meeting, the Select Board is not meeting for a month. What we, another approach would be, write the letter.
And then show up.
And then show up.
Yeah, right.
If we've got that, if we've got that time.
I like that approach, Madam Chair.
We all should show up.
Yeah, I think we all should show up, in all seriousness, at that meeting.
And in my comments, I made sure that they understood that I was speaking on my own behalf.
I heard you say that.
We will be on the agenda for the 29th.
It's perfect, then we're all there.
We're there.
If we send the letter now, then they know it's coming and we get there with them on the 29th, we bring it up then.
I don't know whether you can bring it up when you're sitting there talking about zoning, if it's not on the agenda, you're going to have to stand up.
You have to stand up.
During the open mic, during the open mic.
We could do that, we could do that.
And we'll be glad to sit around and wait for you at the end of your meeting to have the discussion.
Madam Chair, that would be Tuesday, the 29th, just to be clear.
Tuesday, the 29th.
Just wanted to mention that to you. And again, notwithstanding anybody else's pre-existing commitments, I certainly will do my very, very, very best to be there in support of us and you.
Unless it's a game seven, the teams that I may want to see.
Dreaming, Jim.
I would, I would like to make kind of an odd request, but I've heard two very passionate voices here about this. Not that yours wasn't, but tonight, two very passionate voices about this subject. I want you to, to collaborate on what the letter says.
Okay.
Can you work together on that? Please?
Yes, of course, of course.
I'd be glad to work with my colleague.
Of course.
This is not something Kathy can draft.
No.
Oh, because it's coming from you?
It's coming from us.
This is not something Kathy can.
Ah, okay, oh, yeah, yeah.
It's not a staff issue.
I was going to say, because Kathy writes really good letters, okay, all right.
Kathy's not writing.
It's like, Kathy writes good letters too.
Madam Chair, it should come from the board and not, it has nothing to do with our.
Yes, ma'am, we will do that. Fourth with.
By our next meeting, perhaps we could have a draft?
Oh.
Because we have to get it to them by the 29th.
Well, I think we want to get it to them maybe a week or maybe even a week before, so they have time to read, whatever, yes, of course.
Mr. Slovac, hopefully will be at our next meeting and we can discuss it, have it on the agenda.
Can I ask just a quick point of order? How are we allowed to distribute this draft without violating any open meeting laws? Ooh, you like that one, that's a good one.
I think you and Jim will have to, you can work amongst yourselves and come up with a draft and then you send it to me and I will put it in the packet and it will be discussed by the entire group in public open meeting.
So we have to have it ready for our, our next meeting?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, Madam Chair, that's, I just wanted to clarify that so we don't run afoul of any.
Which would be next Friday.
Friday?
Because it has to be ready for.
That we need to get for our meeting.
Oh, Friday, yeah.
Yes.
Okay, got it. Deadline, deadline has been created.
Is the idea that we'd all sign the letter, the entire?
Assuming we all agree to it.
Assuming we all agree to it.
Assuming Mr. Slovac also agrees to it, yeah. All right, Jim, we have a deadline, Madam Chair, we're on it.
Thank you.
Thank you for bringing this up. And by the way, it connects to local, may I just make the final connection to the local comprehensive plan, which is where you started this conversation 10 minutes ago? Which is, I, Susan and I were standing at the community system, I didn't say it right, the natural, no, not natural, that's not. Community systems.
Yes.
And that, if you, just as an, as an aside, the one that had the most stickers was, figure out what to do with Matichees. So I just, you know, shocking.
It edged off the chat.
Right, it literally, we literally had to go to a second row, Madam Chair, a second row of stickers, that's how many stickers. Anyway, I know we haven't even talked about the meeting yet, but I just wanted to tie a bow onto Mr. Saban bringing up the issue as it relates to the issue on the agenda.
Local comprehensive plan update.
I guess it's just going to maybe each of us could kind of talk a little bit about their personal experiences at the open house. I thought it went very well, I had a lot of really good conversations, very, people were very interested. They seemed, a lot of people, very knowledgeable about what was going on in town, which is always nice to see. So I haven't seen any of the information back and I'm sure BSE Group is processing the data that was collected from people and they're going to be coming to the planning board, I believe, at our November 6th meeting and kind of give you a status update of kind of where we are, including a summary of that data. We did have the nice demonstration, I think, of the, using the mapping. So hopefully, some people got some good information on that and can readily start doing more of that.
Madam Chair, may I ask a question? Well, we have the next big meeting, which I think is in January, and maybe at a similar location. When we have the next big meeting, which I think is in January, and maybe at a similar location, I don't know, to be determined, is it going to be too late to talk about mapping or to use mapping? Or is that still going to be a good opportunity for people to kind of be really specific? I'm only saying that because, as we know, all politics is local. And I do feel like it's hyper-local for some people, forgetting about the villages. I'm talking about intersections, traffic lights. I heard specifically about some power poles on Route 6A that some folks were concerned about. And I just, maybe this is the right opportunity, or now, between now and November 6th, or now and whenever, to emphasize that particular tool, which I think is incredibly valuable. But I also want to make sure that people don't feel like they're shut out if they show up in January. And they say, "You know, I really need to talk about this intersection."
Yeah, I don't think people will be shut out in January.
I was, I wasn't assuming that.
I think what we're trying to do is start collecting as much information as possible. We do have a meeting with the schools on October 8th to go through some of the topics with them as well and get their kind of input. But we need to start at some point coalescing some of these goals and start getting input. But people can certainly still, at that point, saying, "I really think you should do blank in order to solve this problem, and this problem we may not have heard about before." But we need to start looking at potential solutions to all of the issues and concerns that people have brought forth. And it doesn't mean that, and this is macro, you know, we're not going to get into, we're going to move the utility pole number 6584 on, it's not going to be like that. So it's going to need to be more, a little bit more generic or overarching in nature versus very, very specific. It doesn't mean that we're not going to get to those specific things, but those probably don't need to be in the LCP per se, tiny little things. They kind of get done as based on everyday, you know, public government work, just talking to people and people saying, "I need something done."
Any other comments for, I mean, we were all, all of us were there.
Yeah.
Mr. Saban.
I just have a couple of quick ones. First of all, the mapping, we have a new Communications Director in town. That should be on our Channel 8 or whatever channel to expose more people to it. It's a really cool tool to actually play with, and it can give us a lot of good data if we can get the word out to the community that it's available for them to use.
Even just easy access through the front page of the town website.
Yep.
But it's a great tool that I think we need to promote somehow at a greater, greater degree than we have. The other comment that I have, a couple of comments. One, I thought the turnout of people was pretty good, a lot of familiar faces and a lot of faces that we don't typically see. One thing that I took away, a lot of people said to me, "This is a lot to digest." There were a lot of bullets on each thing, so that was one of the biggest things. Wow, there's a lot for me to consider here. Maybe I should go back and look at something again. So I don't know if we can, you know, put a Reader's Digest version together that is less detailed or not. The detail is valuable, but I think a lot of people felt there was an awful lot to take in and-
Wasn't it drawn, sorry, Madam Chair, what I did when people asked me the same question is, a lot of them in their, in their hand had the Vision Plan, which essentially is the summary of what most of those bullet points that were on the physical boards were drawn from. So I pointed people, because I pointed people to say, "If you just look at the Vision Plan and just take that home and let that marinate, then unfortunately, it's a little bass ackwards, but what's on the boards will make more sense." And maybe in future meetings, Mr. Saban, that's the best I could come up with, because I really felt like, I agree with you, but also the Vision Plan, I think, is where they drew a lot of this board, boards from, isn't that right, Kathy?
Yes, yep, and our interviews and the Open Space and Rec Plan, the Housing Production Plan, all the stuff that we've done was kind of coalesced and kind of redrafted a little bit some of those. And unfortunately, it is a lot of information. The local comprehensive plan will be a big document that covers literally so many aspects of our community. It's really hard to not make it too overwhelming. And this is something that, you know, we need to talk with BSE Group about what we're doing in January and how we're doing it. And I didn't know whether it might make some sense to have, like, short little surveys based on each topic. Like, if we're starting to look at some specific action items and policies and goals for, say, housing or something, so then just say, "Here's housing." Go in and maybe we have, how do you rate these simple seven or eight things that we're talking about doing? The economy, here's, probably have 15 things that we're doing with the economy. But then they can rate, "Does this make sense to you? What else do you think we should be doing?" And then people can go in and take surveys in the topics that they're concerned about. Because you have to create bite-sized morsels of the LCP, because it can be overwhelming, and we don't want people choking on it. So it is hard, and that's why I've been really relying on the consultant, because I'm like, I don't have a clear understanding on the best ways to get people to input that. And the crowdsourcing maps are great, because then if I put a comment in, you can say, "No, Kathy, you're crazy," and give me a thumbs down, and Susan can say, "Great, great comment," and so we can get an idea how the general community feels about all these different comments that kept put in. But not everyone is super comfortable doing that. So having the individual meetings, you know, and having people come out is helpful. But it's a lot.
Yeah, no, it definitely is a lot. I think one of the things that I took away, just going around the room and comments that I had heard from the public, was there is, there's so much there that there needs to be some sort of consolidated list of like, "These are the most important topics that we're concerned about, you know, the overall comprehensive plan, but these are what the public are saying." If we look at it, like, for example, storm resiliency, I was on the natural board there, and that was, you know, I was looking, I was like, going in there? I mean, yeah, it's important to all of us, but it was one of the top items that people put their tags on. And I just think that we can't forget the fact that if that's the most important, I'm not talking about that one item, if we look at each one of the boards and say, you know, wastewater was a huge thing, you know, Matichees, whatever it is, here's our top list that we're trying to, you know, trying to tackle. Because you're not going to be able to tackle everything at one time.
On the, Kathy, on the boards that I had, the one that got the most comment was communication. How the town communicates with its citizens.
Ties back to what Jim was saying about the community.
Exactly, it wraps around the whole thing. We can, we can put up with a great pin, but if we don't get the ideas out to the citizens, it's meaningless. And these are very complex, and a lot of them cross-cut.
Yeah.
It's hard to talk about open space without talking about recreation or without talking about the environment. And so there's a lot of cross-cutting concepts. And maybe they will, maybe they would take some of these large issues like the environment and maybe have a workshop, or have a separate week where they do something Monday, Tuesday, every night to take one of those topics and flesh it out a little bit more. I will say, the people that showed up, there was, the crowd was, I was pleased to see them, and the people that were there were very knowledgeable.
Yep.
They really were, they knew exactly what things meant. They were sort of ranking them, yeah, this is more important than that. So it wasn't like someone, a newbie walked in and said, "What's going on here?" Everyone that I dealt with really understood what the issues were.
Right.
And those are the people that always tend to show up anyway. And they did, they showed up and they got very involved.
Yeah, and Susan, I totally agree, the people that showed up, at least at my board, were extremely informed, and there were a lot of people that I'd never met before, but I've seen, I also saw a lot of familiar faces. The one comment that I'd have, and certainly it goes about, "How do you get some younger people involved?" I did not see too many young people there. And certainly, "We're trying to look at a comprehensive plan for the town of Yarmouth to take it to future generations." I'd like to believe we need to get some young people to hear their opinions, too.
Yeah, that's a tricky one, and then I'd like to think that younger people are more comfortable going to things like the online mapping.
Yeah, probably.
So this is where we're trying to, like, hit it in multiple facets. And trying to get the word out, doing lots of different things, like the police night out, and I'm trying to hawk some of the flyers here today if people come. And so we're trying to get the word out. I don't know whether maybe what you're talking about, Jim, is, is maybe having like a video of someone doing the mapping and showing people the mapping, or just-
Just to simply put it out there, however you put it out there.
It's been put out significantly, that's why I'm asking what, so-
Is it easy to find?
Jim's right, it's hard to find, though. The town website-
I'm on the Friends of Yarmouth, I'm on a bunch of, and I don't see it mentioned anywhere.
And I do think that's important, Kathy.
It's hard to find even on our own website.
I think people need to tag it in, like, from the town website to other things.
Sure.
The town website's pathetic.
Well, right, but that's another conversation that I'm hoping we can have at the end of this meeting.
It goes to the communication issue.
Right.
It certainly could live in a more prominent location on the town website.
Yes.
Like a big old button on the front.
Yep.
Or something, or as soon as you, and I can't remember, so I have to plead some ignorance, if you do click through to the local comprehensive plan section of the town website, is it very easy and prominently located? I think it is.
Once you get through to it, you can find it, but you have to get through to it.
It's very simple to get to it, though, and that's what I've been really trying to get. It's yarmouth MA.us, which is, I'm sorry, that gets us to the town website, forward slash LCP. You just put that in your Google search and you will get right there.
Okay.
And then it shows you-
So how about the people that don't know what the LCP is, that you want to get them out of their curiosity to click, you know, survey, I mean, just the fact that there's a survey. If you said LCP, you're like, "What is that?" But, oh, there's a survey. What do they want to know about what's going on in town? Not to tell you how to run our-
Don't we have a communications person?
I mean, don't even get me going about trying to buy a plank on the boardwalk, but I think I figured that one out today.
I think you did a great job. You bought two, so you managed.
I hope you know that.
I'm assuming Tammy did it.
You clicked twice.
Thank you, Jim.
You did different ones.
Yeah, but, but is he sure?
Well, because somebody gave me the directions.
No offense.
And the directions are distributed at Town Hall, they're on the website. And again, that's yarmouth MA.us forward slash planks.
Okay.
Very simple.
Yes.
I don't, I don't know, there's not, they're not going to give me a button on the front page of the town.
But Kathy, you're right, the crossposting is important, all the committees and different neighborhood groups that Susan and Mr. Saban and others are on, you know, if you could, it is the Communication Director's job to help build those relationships with those groups, to say, "Here's this stuff. Can you please help share it with your groups?" Because not everybody thinks of the town website for all kinds of reasons. And people sometimes only go to the town website for all kinds of reasons that have nothing to do with the things that we're talking about here.
Yeah.
And they don't want to hunt two clicks, and that's it.
Don't get me started with young people.
Yeah.
We are, we are at the top.
Kids these days.
We are at the top of, there's like a ribbon at the top, and we're on the top.
Yes, I know.
That's what I got.
There you go.
And that's, and that's valuable real estate on our town website, which, as Ms. Britta has pointed out, could use some-
People to go to the top and see that, which means go to the town website.
Right, which again-
You get, you get that, you get Susan's feeling about the town website.
Right, but at least if there's ways from the other groups that you're a part of to click through, because they say, "Here it is, here it is, here it is," in their newsletters, then it just breaks, it's just one less-
What I do is I send out information, and I ask for it to be posted on social media. I don't check, I'm told, "Yep, all done, Kathy." I don't see what it is, I don't go and search to see what it is. So maybe when that gets done, I can let you guys know and you can tag in. I mean, what, we need, I need help from you guys, because we're only going to, we have one Communications Director who's very, very busy with wastewater. So what can, if we're going to ask her to do something, what is the most beneficial? And I think obviously what we're already doing, different things like press releases, and she did a nice press release for us, she did, obviously, I do a news item, it's on the town website, and then social media. And then I individually send it out to civic assoc-, I do a little blurb, send it out to civic associations. I ask people, distributed to people on different committees and boards.
Yes.
I also have a lot of great email lists from the Open Space and Rec Plan. We have 400 people on our, signed up for Civic Sense specifically for this.
And also the Vision Plan.
The library, yeah, those people, those are those people that got, yeah, they got moved over. So, so, you know, there's, and the Code Red thing, I think, was extremely helpful. We're very grateful to the police to let it happen. Numerous people came up to me and said, "Some nice lady called me," and I said, "That was me."
And I'm not nice.
Susan set my wife straight.
What, oh, yeah, right. She said something nice, and he had to set her straight. So I think that's one of the things that was very, very effective with that. But it's just hard, people are bombarded with so much information.
I think you just got to encourage people to share. There's an individual who came the other night, whose name I won't mention, but this young lady in our community, who I see constantly sharing stuff on Facebook about town stuff.
Great.
And I'd love to have her sit right here, I think she'd do a great job. It's about sharing it on social media and all the different spots that we all have. So when you see something, or when Kathy puts it out, maybe part of it needs to be, "Please share this with," and then whatever the data is, but, you know, the kids, the young people today, you know, they're not going to click on the town website to see what's going on.
No.
But they're going to read something about, you know, "Do the kids get dismissed today early?" Which is the DY website that I see, or-
They can find that in an instant.
"Is today Green's Day?" Or, you know, the younger generation who have children are looking at those sites to get a lot of information.
Speaking of which, Kathy, the DY Parents Facebook group would be a great place. Great place, because those are younger, skewing people who do care about the town, I'm using that in broad strokes. And we've also, if I'm correct, Madam Chair, when we were doing the visioning process, we use the school communications function in order to get the Vision Plan into backpacks or at least notifications to the parents as well.
What they, Carol Woodbury did was they just sent out, I'd have a brief little text message saying, you know, "Come to the blah, 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 blah for more information," and then give them the link.
And that's what they click through.
Give them the link.
Exactly.
Yeah, and so then people could just, so they weren't reading a lot, but they could go right, right to that. And I believe they did something similar right before the open house, because they've been coordinating with that.
Oh, they did.
See, I just, you know, I ask people to do a lot of stuff, and sometimes people will send back saying, "Done, Kathy," and I say, "Thank you," but a lot of times, people just do it, and I, I don't know. They just, they're just like, "Oh, she's sending me this, okay, I'll just send it around." And but, so it's hard for me to know how much is being disseminated. The libraries and the Recreation Department have a lot of good email lists, and I ask them to blast it out to their email lists. I think the library did that right before the open house, so-
But just respectfully, email is not going to get you most people under the age of 40.
Right.
So I'm just, I get it, and I'm into it, and I respect it, but, but that's going to always skew older, if anywhere. So it's just, it's just, and, it's email and, I think, even more and more and more. And I'm not saying anybody over the age of 40 loves email, because if I got no more email for the rest of my life, I would be a happy person.
So it's not just a matter of putting it on our Facebook, it's just having our Communications Director tap into all these other Facebooks and then sharing them with them.
Well, yeah, and that's a lot of them.
Yeah, I might need some help with the list. I don't know, I'm going to check with her, maybe she's done some of this already, and I don't know. But I can definitely look into that.
It's at Yarmouth.
Any other comments from the meeting? I thought it, the open house went well, was a good turnout.
One last comment, Madam Chair, I thought that they did a very nice job managing it.
The BSE.
Yes, yeah, I really thought they did a nice job keeping a flow to it, and, you know, from that standpoint, so.
Soft drinks and cookies could have been a little better, but.
There's always one, Kathy.
It's always him.
I know, I didn't want to say that.
He's always the one.
I thought you'd been doing this long enough. You always eat before you come to these things, so that you don't have to worry.
Well, the cinnamon donut holes were really good, but I just didn't like the salsa water.
See, I love the salsa water.
They're trying to keep you healthy.
Yeah, yeah.
Kathy, you may have already done this, but as our consultants, have you reached out to them as to, in their experience, what has worked really well? What's the, what are the best practices for towns where they've helped with their LCP for this kind of outreach? Are there things where, that have worked elsewhere that we don't know about? Or we just, we've covered everything that is typically covered in terms of outreach and avenues of community?
I think we're covering everything that's typically. I think, you know, when you get to social media, there's the nuances of, is it just, is it just getting stuck Everything that's typically, I think, you know, when you get to social media, there's the nuances of, is it just, is it just getting stuck on our social media? Or are people sharing it? So I think that makes the big difference, and, and I can definitely talk to the communications director about that. The select board's, one of their priority goals is obviously related to communications and having a set format for communications. So I think, I think we just need to have a process, because I'd like to just be able to say, here, this, this is my, my thing, and you disseminate, you, you snip it down to something reasonable, you do whatever, and, and, and go. I don't mind sending stuff to my email list of people and stuff like that, because it gives her a lot of good information to call, you know, a Facebook page post from. But yeah, I think that's interesting. I think it's certainly something we can expand upon.
Madam Chair, I did have a quick discussion at the end of the meeting. They really did like the space of the senior center. In fact, they said that at some towns they've gone to, it's too many people in too small a space to have these kinds of conversations. So you end up literally getting, yeah, not physically on top of each other, but, but audio, audi, orally. Is that the word? Yeah. So what they were happy about is there was literally enough space between all the boards and all this different, the four different sections that we had, so that not only were you not physically on top of each other, but you could have separate conversations, and it wasn't interfering with anybody else's conversation. So it feels like they're big fans of the Yarmouth Senior Center.
The problem with the Yarmouth Senior Center is it's not set up like, we don't have this kind of setup.
You mean digitally?
Digitally. You could, you could send someone with a camera and they could record it, but it wouldn't be live.
Right.
You know, and it's a little.
Is there another place, is there any other physical place besides the D Y auditorium? Like where else could we, I mean, where other physical locations are there within the town that can do that, besides this room?
That are town, within the schools, and I don't know what's available at the intermediate school, but this is it.
Right. So, I mean.
So, yeah, we don't have a lot of other large meeting rooms with this type of capabilities.
Unless we reset this room, but even then, it, that gets to the issue what they were saying to me about the senior center, which is, this room isn't big enough.
It depends on the style of the present, of the, of the presentation. Obviously, for an open house where you're kind of have different stations, you need it spread out a little bit more. We, we did do that here for the open house, for the open space and rec plan.
You did.
But we didn't have anywhere near the number of people. That would have been, that would overwhelm this, this room. So we need to talk about that a little bit more. And then I had also talked to them a little bit about, they talked about having a hybrid meeting. And I'm like, well, maybe we do something that's similar to what was done for the housing summit, where we had the meeting in the senior center, and it was recorded. But then we had a separate Zoom-only, remote one. So it was a little bit easier. So anybody who couldn't make the actual physical meeting, this is the time to come online, and you can, you can do it, do it that way, if it's easier for you to, to participate that way.
Well, hopefully in about five years, Madam Chair, there'll be a new library where we could have such a meeting.
Or a renovated one.
Or both.
Or both. Let's, let's, let's get the upgrade on technology for sure.
I just want to point out one more thing, is that B S C group is going to be coming down for the seaside festival. We're going to set up a table with the fire department. We're going to do it on the Saturday, which I believe is the 12th. But if it's rainy crappy day and we think that people aren't going to come, we're going to, and 13th, Sunday's better, we'll do it on, on Sunday. We have.
Four or something?
Yeah, something, something along those lines. I'm, I meet with B S C group every other week, so I meet with them next Wednesday, and we'll kind of go over that whole layout and process. I'm going to be there for probably four hours of it. I'm not going to stay all day, but it would be good if maybe some other planning board members might be able to come out and participate.
Is it just the one day or the two days?
Just the, we're just going to do one day.
12.
Yes, the Saturday, if, if the weather's good, but if it's poor, we don't want to hand out stuff and talk to two people.
I can come by.
Be able to help.
Yeah, I can go by.
Well, I'll give out more information, you know, on Friday. Oh, and then Monday's the holiday, I kind of remember that. So we can kind of maybe set up shifts of people who are interested. So Joanne's interested, anybody else?
I'm going to put it on my calendar, but I can't commit to it as I sit here, but.
I may be, be interested too.
Just want to put it on the calendar.
Could I just double check?
Okay.
Roughly 10 to 4.
That's kind of maybe.
Clarification when you have it.
Yep.
Okay. Thanks.
I'm not exactly sure of the format and what we're going to be doing, but when I'd spoken with them previously about it, it was like they were going to try and, you know, get more information out of people, from the information from the open house.
Sure.
So maybe they'll try and call that down a little bit. So that's it.
Anything else on that?
Nope, I'm off that.
So let's jump to meeting minutes. May have a motion to accept the meeting minutes of September 18th.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. So we didn't have a 4 on that, Kathy?
Yeah, 401, that's fine.
Is Susan voting yes?
I, I wasn't here. I wasn't here that day.
302.
It's still, it's still passes.
Still okay? Great. Okay.
It's the majority of the people voting.
Ah, yeah, okay. Any committee updates?
I, by capital budget, we have met with police, wastewater, and water over the last 10 days. All the departments that we met with were very well prepared, had, you know, really great presentations to us. You know, some items that we had discussions with them of where, you know, there's only a limited amount of money out there, where this money is coming from, and understood. And, you know, and as an example, we met with police yesterday, and they were like, a couple items, they said, well, we really would like to get this. We understand there's limited funds, and there's a couple items they were willing to say, okay, if it has something else to go, we, these could go. So next week, we're meeting with fire, I T, and schools. So, yeah, so we got a heavy week next week of meetings and all that, so, but it's been good. It's been all been good.
The new electronic process is pretty amazing.
The new electronic process is wonderful from the voting. It's, Bill, Bill has it working very seamlessly now, from the voting and keeping records and all that stuff, and our data input. It's fantastic, but there's still a lot to the process.
There is. No more binders, Madam Chair.
Wow.
Binders are gone.
Yeah, the binders are all gone.
Any other committee updates?
Madam Chair, so as I said earlier, I'd gone to the selectments meeting last night to express my displeasure with us, the planning board not being on the Mattakese Committee. But I also had an opportunity to, to address the naming of the drive-in site. The drive-in site committee and Kathy and Beta have worked very, very hard for a long period of time to create a park that is what our community wanted. Not just a boardwalk, not just a kayak ramp, not just a playground, not just an event space. And for some reason, even though we spent a long time looking at names suggested from the community, and the drive-in site committee put together a, what I consider a very good list of potential names, the Tuesday night show decided that they should name the park the Parker's River Boardwalk Park. I'm very dissatisfied with that, because it is much more than a boardwalk park. This park is going to be a gem for our community that we'll all be very proud of. And for it to be referred to as the Boardwalk Park, frankly, is ridiculous. And I expressed that opinion to the Board of Selectmen last night, again, with no response to my comments, but had asked them that they would reconsider either dropping the word boardwalk or looking at the list of names that, that the drive-in site committee gave them in the first place. And, and again, I, sad to report that I don't think, I think their egos are in the way, and they don't want to admit that they've made a mistake. So we may be stuck with the Boardwalk Park, which is the dumbest name they could ever have come up with.
Jim, just for clarification purposes, the list of names that you gave them, that name was not part of that list.
It was not.
Not?
Nope.
Just wanted, just wanted a clarification.
About how many nominate, how many names came in, hundreds?
Oh, over 200, plus petitions of individual names.
I mean, I saw the historical society one that came in, the presentation.
And I don't think any of them were four names long.
Yeah, how many did you act, was there a final list that came from your committee? It's like 10, right? Four or five?
We gave them four, four, four names.
Got it.
They picked up the themes. Park, Parker's River, but none of them were four names long.
And none of them had those two words together.
Exactly. And we certainly didn't mean boardwalk.
Could you, could you tell us what those four names are?
Excuse me?
Do you know what those four names, the top four, were?
Riverwalk Park, Parker's River Esplanade.
Riverside Park.
Riverside Park, and.
Parker's River Landing.
And Parker's River Landing.
Thank you.
But for them to use the word boardwalk really, to me, did a very disservice to the committee and to the work that we have spent years on, trying to make sure that we've created a, a property that is a lot of things for a lot of us.
Can I make a suggestion to you, Jim?
Not just the boardwalk.
That, as we talked earlier about the planning board sending a letter to the select board, why doesn't your, the committee send a letter?
Well, we may just do that. I just got back from a trip, so I.
Understood. I'm just making.
All of a sudden, I get back, I'm like, what, what?
I'm just making a point to let them know.
And the funny part is, I would make a counter, I would make an additional motion that says that we should rename Gray's Beach Gray's Beach Boardwalk. Because I mean, because I mean, literally, if you ask me, where's the boardwalk in Yarmouth? I'm going to Gray's Beach. Most people, in fact, it's promoted. It is promoted by our town as the most gorgeous boardwalk on the, well, maybe not that, but it is unbelievable. It is, it is. I'm just saying, I don't think we necessarily call it that, even though I believe it is. So that's the more sort of, I won't use the word insulting, but I just did. It, it actually makes it even worse.
So when we had Bass River Beach and Smugglers Beach, until somebody went to them and said, you can't have two beach, one beach with two names. Well, now we're going to have two boardwalks, and probably say, oh, the event is at the boardwalk.
Exactly.
I'm at the boardwalk, there's nothing going on over here, but it's a beautiful sunset.
And it's not even called that.
That's because you're at the wrong boardwalk.
And it's not even called that formally. It's just called Gray's Beach.
Or Bassel. Or, yes.
Why do the public outreach if they're not even going to listen?
Again, we don't meet on Tuesday night, so we don't get to have that, but those were the, the two committee things that I have.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, I have a committee update. I do. I just wanted to follow up on something positive that came out of the select board meeting last night. Were the contracts approved by the select board for the final contracts for the wastewater phase one, including our friend, the sewer plant? It's been approved. And the good news is, when you add up all the contracts and you compare it to the 207 million that was approved by our voters, thank you very much, two or three time meetings ago, the final total, I think, is 205 million and change. So really good news, and I don't think we should have this meeting end without some good news. So there is one. Second is, that construction should start, I'll just use the terms, early in 2025. And hopefully, we'll be flushing toilets into it by the end of 2027. So when, when you hear 2027, please let your mind go to December of 2027, and when people start asking when the sewer plant will be online. But our next meeting is not until Monday, Madam Chair. But again, I do think there is going to be some sort of public meeting, not the business owners facing meeting that we had about two or three weeks ago, which was good and very well attended, but I think in more general terms about people learning about hookups and other conversations about traffic and construction and things like that. And also, I hope to have in two weeks, some updates on whether or not the, our friends at Mass D O T are going to consider some extension of the seasonal, you know, some breaking down of these seasonal barriers that they have in place. They're November 15th to April 15th. I mean, goodness gracious.
Can I ask you, Will, is that related to when the paving plants close?
It has something, my understanding, it has much more to do with plowing.
It, it has all to do with plowing.
In fact, it has nothing to do with.
It has nothing to do with paving.
There are some other, in other genres, the paving plants is, is an issue. But in this particular one, it has everything to do with their decision at the beautiful, the beautiful state powers that be, that November 15th to April 15th is snow season. Last time I checked, Madam Chair, we are not in Fort Kent or Holton in northern Maine. I believe we are on Cape Cod. And as someone who's lived in the beautiful state of Maine for four years, that would be appropriate. That is not appropriate in beautiful southeastern Massachusetts. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Okay, moving on. Moving on. Moving on. Any other committee?
I had a Kathy question, when it's time, Madam Chair.
We, we do have, I'm going to have Kathy do any updates you need to share with us, Kathy, beyond what you've already shared with us.
I think the only thing I would say is we're doing a big push on the plank sales. We want to sell 200 by Halloween.
Hey, Jim bought two of them.
I have sold, there's seven today, so I did a big push, I did a big push on it.
Did it include Jim's two?
Yeah, I saw your note.
Yeah, so I did, I did a big push this morning, and again.
How many are sold today? Seven or?
Probably so far, 35.
Oh, okay.
Yeah. And 35, you know, that's, you know, that's like.
165 left.
Like, I don't know, 12, $13,000.
That's great.
So if we sell the 200, that's $70,000, just at 350. And we've sold a couple, one business and one nonprofit, so they're, they're more expensive, so.
It's a great Christmas gift.
It is a great Christmas gift.
A great way to memorialize somebody that you love and care who may have left us.
And we also have some awesome new drone footage on our YouTube channel and on the front page. They got a button for the drone footage.
Did see that, yeah.
That was just taken yesterday by Ellie Lawrence. She's very lovely and went out and took another. It's very interesting to see. It's great, the drone, because you can see everything.
Well, you showed it to us a month ago, and it was amazing.
Yeah, and now it's even more amazing.
More amazing. It is really.
I assure you, you're all going to be very proud of this property when we're done.
What is the, again, what is the general timetable on the park being?
We don't have one. We make it up as we go.
I'm saying general.
We still have to bid out the restrooms, and that's been lagging a little bit. So everything, it's just because it's built, it's bid out in a different way with filed sub bids and. The difference between the transfer, the collection system and the, and the treatment facility.
I got it. I got it.
But the, the hope is still that it will, the whole park, including the restrooms, will be completed by August of 2025.
Oh, wow. I was, okay. I was, my head was going to 2026 already.
No, listen here.
Amazing.
They're cranking. Robert P. Howard is doing a very good job.
Done an amazing job.
Hope for the best, Jim.
You're going to love it. It's going to, it's.
I can't wait.
They're going to start, you know, they're doing some load testing now on the boardwalk, but that's going to actually, I think they're going to start construction by the end of the month.
I mean, it'll be too late for next summer, but I'm already thinking about doing some kayak, doing some work, doing some camp stuff, where we launch our kayaks.
We should have a.
Launch our kayaks from there and go on a kayaking trip.
And we could have a big Labor Day thing if it, if we get it open, have that as a normal weekend.
Actually, a gentleman came and stopped by and was asking about having a vendor there. So he wanted to be a vendor, so it was interesting.
We got to do food truck roundup.
The kayak vendors. Oh, similar to the ones at the bridge.
That'd be a great idea. Look, you go down to the one at Busch Fairgrounds, places packed.
And, you know, you can't get to Falmouth from here, so let's do the food trucks here.
Yeah, they have a huge one over in Falmouth, too.
Right, but that's, you can't get there from here.
No, but that's, we should have our own. We should definitely have our own.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, that would be great.
I'd like to fill the dreams. Build it, and they will come.
They will come, especially food.
Exactly right, Jim.
You had something, Mr. Rose.
I did, I just wanted to follow up. Kathy mentioned the meeting with the school committee. Part of the L C P process. That is on the 8th at 11:00 or 10:00 or 9:00 or 12:00?
It's 11:30. It's, it's, it's with the superintendent and the chair of the school committee.
And where is that?
Myself. It's, it's here in Room A.
On the 8th?
On the 8th at 11:30 to 1:00, I think. I, I got to double check.
Because if, if, if anybody has not yet, I would highly recommend they tune in about minute 45 of last night's select board meeting, where there was a long discussion about our friends at the Massachusetts School Building Authority, of which I had the interesting opportunity to work with as part of the intermediate school plan and then eventual award. And what they, what their opinion is, as opposed to what the select board and the town of Yarmouth may think in terms of what the future of Mattakese, even Wixon, sorry, not even Wixon, Mattakese and Ezra Baker and Station Ave, like, there's, there's a big conversation to be had, and I'm not saying that's what's going to happen on the 8th, but there's just a lot of conversations to be had. And that's why I wanted to know what that meeting was more focused on. But I suggest, if you haven't, to watch minute 45 to about 65 of last night's select board meeting. Because a couple of the select board members rightfully educated the school superintendent on some of the history of what happened in 2015, 16, 17, 18, and 19. And I think he has, over the last two times he's been in front of the Select Board. No, no, he did, he learned it two, two meetings ago, but I think he's continuing to understand. And I will say, it's nice to hear that there is even the idea of starting to talk to our friends in Dennis, because they are our friends, and they are part of the school, the, the school district. It is a combined school district. Regardless of the percentages, it's still a combined school district. So I'm happy to hear that that meeting will happen. Also wanted to follow up, Madam Chair, on this very exciting thing I heard about from Kathy called an app, a Town of Yarmouth app. Have you heard it? No, it doesn't exist yet, but apparently it's in the works.
Yes, that's my understanding.
Anything else that you can tell us?
No.
Because it's on, but it is on the horizon.
They just signed the contract related to it.
What you did there, Jim.
Yeah, so IT is working on it.
Do you feel like it's before 12:31?
I think possible, yeah.
Well, again, another opportunity to promote something that could be valuable, especially to folks, let's just say, under the age of 40, Madam Chair. Thank you.
Anything else? Kathy, anything else? We'll just do a quick update on upcoming meetings. We talked about the Seaside Festival. Talked about October 8th, I'll be joining you for that.
Yep.